Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for November 7th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Number three on the agenda is invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute limit time per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have nobody signed in today. So we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval, second.
Discussion, comments, changes?
We do need to add personnel onto the exec session. So one twenty-five, two-one for personnel. We have six on there as well for security.
All right. Any further changes, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the approved agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda, which includes the minutes, travel education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments, changes on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, number, letter A is approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments, changes to the claims? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to the department head reports. Sheriff, you're first in line.
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning, Sheriff. Currently, overview of the jail. I currently have forty-nine inmates. Nineteen of them are Brookings County inmates, and then the rest of them are other agencies, a couple from Dool County, six from Moody County, and eleven from the Marshal Service. Dave Beitler talked with me yesterday and said that they were going to be coming next week, I think Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, to get the nurses area back, back to shape, put the ceiling back in. And I think we're still waiting for some of the computer equipment and that to get in. Everything's, yeah, order stuff, it's hard to get anything in yet, so. But hopefully we can get her back in her area because she's been in the twenty-four-seven area, which works out for her, but it's kind of cramped in there when you've got two or three in there. So, but hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have her back in her area. Also, we have one patrol car in, 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 here, and the second one is in Council Bluffs ready to be shipped, so it looks like we'll get two cars this year, so. That'll be good. I have three deputies that have graduated the academy on November seventeenth, and I didn't get a travel request in, but I'll probably attend that on the seventeenth, when they, when they graduate. Also, I got one deputy that starts November thirteenth, and she, he'll have to go through the academy too. He has no previous law enforcement experience, so. But he'll start, he's from the, he's working in the Sioux Falls area, but he's from the Parker area originally. He works for, well, he works out of T. They're out on the interstate, put cones up and all that. And so, he's used to interstate travel, so, anyway. Also, I was able, Charles Wilkerson, one of my deputies, our dog is eight years old, and it was trained on the marijuana odor, and so really, the way the marijuana laws are and so forth kind of put our dog out of business. And he did apply for a grant with the Attorney General's Office, and they did grant us ten thousand dollars from the drug fund for a new dog. Our dog is eight years old, and so, that's, eight years ago, the dual-purpose dog was ninety-five-hundred, now they're ten-five, excuse me, ten thousand, or excuse me, fifteen, or fi- five thousand dollars more, so it's fifteen thousand. So, we're gonna, he's gonna do some fundraising-type stuff to get that. When Commissioner Hostler was there, he did, he went out and fundraised about five thousand dollars to get, to get that, our last dog, so. Not the last one, but, yeah, it was the last one, we, I still had that money, so. Some of the areas around me are not, have dog programs. I think Dool County ended their dog program and so forth, so. I could see us probably going into Dool County. I'm not sure about Kingsbury County, if they still have their, their program or not, but. The dual dog is good, and it's good to have another deputy do it. When, when Sergeant Langstrat got the dog as a patrol deputy, and then he got moved into a supervisor position, and it's hard for a supervisor to, to also operate the dog, because he's got a, he's got a straight shift, and he's doing a lot of administrative things along with everything, so. But with a deputy doing it, we'll, and with our federal overtime, it'll be, I think it'll be a good, a good difference. You know, our dog is still useful because it's still, it's still a bite dog and a tracker, and we've used it several times doing that, so, anyway. If you have any questions about that, but I was, I didn't think, I didn't think we would get the, get anything from the drug fund, but, yeah, they did, so. Other than that, I don't have a lot, the guys have been busy, we've had, you know, with the corn out, getting out deer accidents and, yeah, that, that type of stuff, so. So they keep busy, and I think we're glad to get those three out of the academy because it's been some long days for my guys, so they really stepped up, so. And they're still trying to help SDSU out on weekends too, when they have games, so, anyway. If you've been to Delgate, I'm sure you run across them, so, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori.
Probably around three o'clock today, the interim rural committee out in Pier is going to be addressing some of the election issues, mostly the post-audit process, a lot of prescribing forms, defining procedures, those kind of things. I know they have a really busy day, but they're roughly shooting at three o'clock, and I do have that link if you guys want it. Myself and two of the staff attended an election workshop last month in Pier. It was a really good workshop, a lot of good speakers. I'm feeling really good about the change to having four of us know the election process, so not everything is falling on one person, and we have the backup and we can communicate during the election to make sure things are going the way they should. So I think that's going to be a really good change for the voters. Let's see, mobile home and real estate delinquent letters are going out today and tomorrow, so if you did not pay your property taxes, you will be getting a letter from us. Those are always highly anticipated by the same individuals every year. And if you don't pay your taxes by the end of November, we do put your name in the paper. The only other thing that I wanted to point out, and I'm sure Stacy will bring it up also, is the LATCF funding money. We have ninety thousand left of that. State auditors have finished up, they just have a few things they're tweaking at home on our audit, and they suggested that maybe that should be assigned this year, and possibly a way to do that would be to put it through the same way we did the ARPA money. So that's about all I have.
Thank you. Richard?
Good morning. Bob is at the International Association of Emergency Managers. Been a steady week in the office. It's been kind of a wonder week. It's in the transition, we wonder what box we put stuff in and we go to find it, so. Otherwise, we have our zoning meeting tonight, and we have the public hearing on the ordinance this morning and the rezoning, and, and that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. General agenda items for nine o'clock, so we'll move on to number eight, regular business. Letter A is action to approve agreement twenty-three-sixty-nine, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Oslo Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter B is an action to approve the weed and pest grant application for FY twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Misty had just asked that I get this on there, and yes, it is for twenty-twenty-five. To work that far ahead on, on these grants, so.
All right. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C is an action to automatically supplement unanticipated expenses incurred in reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents for unbudgeted volga tiff dollars to the general ledger line two-five-one-four-seven-two-one-four-five-five-zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
So this is essentially money in, money out. We have a separate fund for this volga tiff, and so we received more tax dollars than what we had budgeted for. So basically, we automatically supplement this so that we can turn around and pay it out, and it doesn't look like we're in the red on the payout, because we're really, truly not. It's whatever we get in goes back out. So this is just to kind of clean up, because budgeting was, was lower than anticipated, so.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter D is a discussion and possible action regarding LATCF funds, ninety-nine thousand remaining that needs to be designated. So we can open that to discussion and potentially action. Comments?
So as Lori had mentioned, we received, we actually received fifty thousand in, last year, and fifty thousand this year, for a total of a hundred thousand. We did a, already do one thousand of that, if you recall, the last couple of weeks for the NACO initiative, for the, the Counties With Public Lands Initiative that NACO is. We gave a thousand dollars of that money to that initiative. So there is ninety-nine thousand remaining to be designated. I mean, similar to what we did with the ARPA funds and using that for salaries, we could do that. I think the auditors, the state auditors are looking for kind of direction from the board on where, how you want to direct these funds, essentially.
Discussion.
So where would we put the funds if we take that payroll's added into, what, do we put them in the special projects fund? Where would the money go if we're transferring it?
So, you, well, first of all, you have to let us know what you want to spend that on. Governments, if it's going to be salaries, then we will, will do that on, the, the finance office will work through that on their end to apply it to salaries. That essentially then frees up money, budgeted money, that we had budgeted for salaries. So that ninety-nine thousand, then, you can do with what you choose.
Or we could put it in commission special projects like we did some of the other, or not?
No, it can't directly go to commission special projects. You need to account for it through government services, you know, so salaries, for instance. Say you're going to apply it there, but then, then you have ninety-nine thousand dollars that you've budgeted for salaries that you don't need now, right? So then, that can go to projects, uh, commission projects, funds or something else, or...
Could it be something that we could put towards, you know, Sheriff just said that he got ten thousand for a new dog. Could we put a portion of that towards that remaining five thousand?
I think so, that would be considered government services? Yes, I think, yeah, a portion of it can go for that, for sure.
Need a motion to decide what we're going to do with it.
What, what's the timeframe? Do we need to have this done by December fifteenth?
By the end of the year, yeah. I think the, the state auditors are looking for it to be accounted for, assigned some way by year end.
Well, I guess I would make a motion to apply the funds to salaries.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
The whole idea is that's the very first step we have to take, and after that, we can decide what we're going to do with the funds, whether it be for supplementing a purchase of a dog or other government services we plan for. But this is the first step, as I understand it, is just to dedicate it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter E is an action to approve a donation to the Christmas Kids and Cops Program. We can open it for discussion to determine amount, and then we can look for a motion.
So in the last several years, the commission has done five hundred dollars for this program. Looked back several years, that's what we have done. This comes out of the public relations line in the commission budget, and I think there's about eighteen hundred left in there for the year, and I don't anticipate anything else coming out of there at this time, so there is money there.
All right. Comments, or is there a motion?
I'd make a motion, donate a thousand to the kids' cop program for this year.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
I think it's appropriate to raise it this year. There's a need out there, so we participate.
All right. Any more discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F is an action to approve retail on-sale liquor and/or retail off-sale wine, cider licenses, applications for FY twenty-twenty-four. Those include the Brookings Country Club, Cuzben's LLC, also known as The Boathouse, Dance Land Campground, Good Roots Farm and Gardens, Shaday Vineyard Incorporated, Skyview Junction LLC, SVK Properties, also known as Midway Place, and Wagon Wheel Resort LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, comments? I think all of these passed there. Jenna, did you want to speak on this?
Yep, all of these businesses have applied before. This, this type of license, the liquor license, and then the wine and cider license run on the calendar year. You can see that two businesses not only apply for the liquor license, but they also apply for the wine and cider license. Actually, no, I take that back. Good Roots and Farm and Gardens does not have a liquor license, but they do apply for that wine and cider license, which has to be done at the same time as a liquor license because they're on the same calendar year. The applications were all completed in our office, they've all paid the second half of property taxes, so by our standards, our office would recommend approval. I'm not sure if the sheriff's office has anything else to add.
All right. Sheriff, any concerns? All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter G is action to approve volunteer board appointments. First one is for extension board, valid depre, one-year term. Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. The second one, letter B, is Kenneth Larson for extension board, one-year term.
Motion approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter H is action to approve request to fill vacancy for a full-time female correctional officer. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter I is an action to approve request to fill vacancy for four full-time, two male, two female corporal correctional officers. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the scheduled at nine, so we've got some time, so Stacy, why don't we move to commission director's report? If that works for you.
Yep. Said I'd have a structure program. We had five townships that submitted both their five-year plan and then the resolution that was needed, so continue to work with them, and we'll be bringing those forward. January fifteenth is the deadline for the commission to approve those projects for twenty-twenty-four funding. Continue to work with townships on twenty-twenty-three projects. There are some starting to trickle in that have gotten done, that are starting to get, starting to get bills. There are a number that haven't been done. We're basically kind of just moving those forward because they're approved, and that rural access infrastructure funding has to go for those types of projects anyway, so. It's kind of working with them to kind of move that forward, even if it gets into the next construction season, so. But we did have five new applications or submittals for twenty-twenty-four funding, so continue to bring those forward as I get updates. I did hand out an open house notice that's coming up this Monday here in this room, I-29 Exit 133 Interchange Modification Study, as well as some discussion on the number of lanes on the US Highway fourteen bypass. So there is an open house coming up on that. It's five-thirty here in this room next Monday. I did attend, along with Kristen and then two highway department employees. We did go out to Pier last week for the Safety and Loss Conference. That was a very good conference, you always learn, learn something. There was a public information officer from Sioux Falls. Her presentation was very, very good, and got some good information from that. The last speaker that kind of closed out the conference had quite the tale to tell about being involved in a large arc flash and, and incident, and how he was injured and was able to come back from that, and now how he preaches, preaches safety. So it was, it was heavy, but it was a very, very good, good talk, so. Other than that, just some upcoming dates. We have tomorrow, for those of you that did RSVP, the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting, the Ten County Meeting, that's up in Clear Lake. It's at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, that starts at noon tomorrow. Friday, offices are closed for Veterans Day. Coffee with legislators, that Chamber B EDC event, November fourteenth. The four-H recognition event is also on Tuesday of the fourteenth, that's out at the OAC. Five o'clock is the supper, and six-thirty is the awards. There's a retirement party for Dave Buckles from Aurora Fire Department, that's on Sunday, the nineteenth. Looking a little further ahead, we'll be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, and then we get even a little bit further out into December with some upcoming things there as well, so. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions?
Who's all going on Wednesday, tomorrow to Clear Lake? Are we carpooling, getting, do we have the...
I think everybody was planning to attend here, obviously not Commissioner Van... I think everybody was planning to attend, um, here, obviously not Commissioner Vanderwall because he is not here, but otherwise, I think all, everyone else at R S V P to go. And I know Lori and Jen and Bev maybe. What's that?
We have the commission vehicle reserved?
Um, I don't know if the Durango is here or if it's in pier with our, I don't know if they took it this week, we'd have to look, I don't know.
You guys want to meet at my office, I could drive.
Meet at your office?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What time you want to meet there?
Eleven, I don't know, what does it take, thirty-five minutes to get there? So, I don't know, eleven fifteen?
Yeah, sounds good.
That's all I have.
All right. State's Attorney's Office Report. All right, well, we had a couple of minutes left here, so we'll work through our commissioner reports and discussions. Mr. Vanderwall is not here, he's on vacation, so, um, Mr. Bartley? Go first.
I know it's pretty short here. Uh, actually, on, uh, twenty-sixth, I was honored to judge the Halloween decorating contest with the commission's office and the finance office, and, uh, I took it very seriously. I think I spent at least ten minutes in each, if not fifteen, and, uh, I couldn't make up my mind as I walked out of there, so I left and got in my car and started, uh, adding the totals up for both the commission office and the, and the finance office, and both were very nicely decorated, I was impressed. Girls, the staff put in a lot, a lot of effort to do that, Lori's office, they surprised her, and, uh, apparently she has an arachnophobia, so they had spiders all over the place, which was impressive. The deciding factor, the commission won first place simply because they dressed up, they wore costumes, and that left the impression when I left, sorry, finance office, you guys weren't in costume. Second place then was the finance office, so it was kind of fun to do that, I appreciate all the effort you guys put in. That's my report.
All right, Commissioner Jensen.
Harvest table, uh, November seventh. Had a meeting with banners, talked about the up, upcoming two-hundred-and-fourteen straight update, um, still waiting on a hydrologist's report, uh, should be, uh, they should be giving a, a report to the commission the next, within the next two meetings, I'm assuming. Uh, and I do believe November twenty-eighth is the Ag Appreciation Banquet, I don't know if Stacy, you've heard anything on that yet? That's all I have.
Mr. Hostler.
My report, like Commissioner Bartley's, is very short, on the twenty. Center. Finance upcoming years, uh, and some upgrades to their building, that is my report.
All right, uh, on the twenty-fifth, I had a beta meeting, um, did that, and then on the. Redevelopment commission meeting, got updated. Still are short of applicants for, for the Brookings Housing, uh, Section Eight housing, so we have plenty of opportunity there. So, if anybody is interested in there, we're starting to do a little more advertising, we're sending out some, some flyers to show that there's some availability there for the vouchers for the Section Eight. It is a process, it does take some time, but, uh, um, there is money there, and, uh, the federal government would like us to try to use it as much as possible. We actually have ported a few of those vouchers over to Mitchell, uh, who had some need, and so, um, if we could get the word out at all about that, that would be great, because we do have funds there to help people who qualify for Section Eight, uh, uh, housing, so. All right, it's nine o'clock, or close enough, so we will get to our scheduled agenda. Public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of the south seven-hundred-and-ten feet of Block One, Hanson Edition, located in the north half, the northwest quarter, in government lots one, two, and three, and in lots nine A and ten A of Camara Beach Edition, all in Section Fifteen Township, one-twelve North, range forty-seven West, Fifth Paramedian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Lake Hendricks Township. Is there a motion to, uh, approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. All right, we will open this up to a public hearing, so first, any proponents for this, any proponents for this can come up and speak.
Yes, the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this recommendation and did approve it with unanimous vote at their meeting in October, the rezoning from agricultural to lake park.
Okay. Are there any more proponents? If you want to come up, yep. Get you another seat there, okay, there we go. Please pull the microphones, introduce yourselves.
Ginny Ness.
Jim Ness.
All right, good.
We're the owners of the land, and we wondered, do you have questions of us or what?
We're in favor of doing this, we just want to make sure, if there's anything that, guidelines or anything that we have to, that you may have for us to try to answer.
Sounds good, so what we'll do is we'll have the opponents, if there's any opponents, we'll open discussion, and you guys will be around for questions if needed?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, sounds good. Are there any more proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing none, we'll close the public meeting, and we'll open up to comments and discussion from the commission. Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, good to go, thank you. All right, next scheduled agenda item is letter B, construction projects update from Brookings Municipal Utilities. Chad Bachman, Supervisor, Water and Wastewater Plant Engineering at B M U. Morning.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Please introduce yourself.
You bet, Chad Bachman with Brookings Municipal Utilities, um. And visit with you guys and give you guys an update on our road project down there on South Town. I, I actually pulled back my email and I looked, I was like, we were here talking back in August of last year, talking about the project and about how we were going to move that sewer out to the road. Um, we got that project going, and as you guys are aware, um, that project had its hurdles along the way, along with every other road project that we ended up doing in, in the community this year. Basically, the project had its ups and downs and hiccups. The biggest question I'm sure everybody is wondering is when are the roads going to be opened up? Um, the, the pipe work on South Main got completed about middle of September, um, there was a little phasing because of keeping the existing sewer in service as we were constructing the new one. Last, early last week, all the piping at the intersection of Western and Forty-Fourth was completed, the only thing that we are waiting for is the paving. Um, right now, as we sit, and, and again, schedules are so liquid at this point in the year because of the weather and everything, but the intent is to close Forty-Fourth and Main as of tomorrow morning, and the paving crews will be in there to do the paving. Obviously, like everything else in South Dakota, it's weather dependent, um, Brian, we sat down with Brian last week, had a really hard conversation because the weather last Tuesday was way different than the weather this week. We talked through a couple of different items, uh, obviously, the two items that we are concerned about is schedule, getting that road open, and then the quality of the product that we're going to end up having at the end of it. Brian gave me some really good resources, D O T, L T A P, um, Professor, uh, Gabachi, I always get his name wrong, up on campus, and so we were able to visit with him and kind of talk through different concerns that we would have with paving outside of the normal window that we're at. At the end of the day, we came up with kind of contingency plans, the weatherman actually came around and started to give us some favorable weather, if you look at the ten-day forecast, it is actually pretty favorable for paving, which, that is nothing more than just dumb luck at this point, but, um, we will continue on, and like I said, every day is a little bit different, I mean, paving windows during the day change. Obviously, we're still adhering to everything in our contract, environmental conditions, four degrees and rising. Because we're outside of those paving windows, we are actually going to do some additional testing, um, I've worked with Dr. Gabachi, going to do some long-term testing type of things, so I'd like to get that results when it's all done and placed and have some additional information, so if there's any concern about the quality of the road, um, we'll, uh, address that at that time, because that's, there's, there's conflicting, do we want to get it done, do we want to get it done right? And the answer is yes, we want a good product and we want it done, we don't want to deal with snow removal on, uh, temporary road surfaces through the winter, so. Any questions or concerns?
I guess, uh, one question I have on thirty-fourth, what's your, and anticipated opening on that to fourteen?
That is, the bottom lift of that went down over the weekend, and I believe, it, I'm going to say that all the projects that we have, the last schedule we've seen is actually everything opened up before Thanksgiving. And again, please, the weather dependent, we don't want to be putting pavement down outside of bad conditions, but right now, if the weatherman is correct, it, it, we're, we're on the upside of the roller coaster of emotions of whether we're going to get it done or not, type of thing, but it goes up and down daily, it sure seems like, so.
It's just a common question, you gotta get.
Oh, yes, and, and to be honest with you, I, I can't thank enough for the, the folks in the last edition and the people on South Main, they've been extremely patient, frustrated at times, um, you don't do these type of projects without impacting people's day-to-day flows, but, uh, we always talk and make sure that we're addressing concerns, and sometimes it's not exactly what you want to hear, but it's the truth and we, we get through it, type of thing. Obviously, been in conversation multiple times with Marty on different road conditions and different concerns, and I think we've addressed those in a timely manner, it, it's just challenging. The community's dealt with a lot of road construction this year, so. Any other concerns or questions?
Township roads.
Yep.
They've been getting pretty heavy traffic.
Yep.
Um, is there, I mean, you can see some of them are starting to, to wear pretty good, um, is that something that's planned in the future to maybe recondition those?
Yep, that, that has been, you know, the piping work and, and the water and sewer part of it is basically as intended, it, we had a hard time with people staying on the detours that were established then, by nature, you find the shortest route that you need to take. I don't want to say we're weekly conversations with township, but at least once a month, and we've done a lot of extra grading, dust control on people on the roads that weren't on the established, but just being concerned about, you know, the, the safety, the, the extra traffic. Um, working with the township on, um, restoring some of those roads, grading, that type of thing. I, I do want to take the opportunity, since I'm in front of you, this, this was only the second phase of our interceptor project, we've got a couple more coming in the, the works. Our next phase, which I've actually been in quite a bit of conversations with the township, is phase three, and that is on Western Avenue from Forty-Fourth or County Road Twelve up to Thirty-second. So, that will be a very disruptive for that community too, so we, we, we worked with them this year and we'll work with them again, and that's obviously one of those roads, roads that were taken, um, and really took a wear and tear on, so we'll have an opportunity to address that then too.
Since you were talking a little bit about the future, as you open up or get your project completed with the new water treatment plant, and you're going to go north of that?
Yep.
Up Thirty-fourth, uh, is that for next year or the year after, or what do you, what's that?
Yeah, that's a great question, so that project, we have one or two projects going on in town, you guys know that, but that is actually a project that we bid, um, constructed up to Highway fourteen, that's where it stops for this year. Um, next year, they'll cross under Highway fourteen and progress all the way up to the bypass on Thirty-fourth, so that work is under contract with the completion date of next fall. Yep.
Are you coordinating at all with the, uh, D O T, I know we've got a, a big deal here coming up next Monday on the bypass construction, and I assume you're going to go under the bypass at some point and continue north towards landfill and then go across the interstate.
Yep.
Do you have any input on their plans? Are they, are you in contact with the D O T and what they're going to do there?
Oh, yeah, yep, the, the, we don't have a real established, we've got a preliminary idea of where we're going to go, but because of that additional work that the D O T is working for, we don't have a real defined, I mean, I would say we're eighty percent of a route, but obviously, we need to coordinate with that other work and stuff in there, so.
I would assume that the D O T's work will take place after your work.
Yep.
At this point in time, they're, they're looking at another three or four years, I think, before they're.
Yep.
Going to make any significant changes on that bypass.
It's nice to have that roadmap of where to go and what people are doing, so at least you can coordinate that effort, so.
Selfishly, Twentieth Street South, which is not in, in the, is in the city, it's still in the county, remember, so.
Right, right, the, and again, the information is so liquid, the last schedule that we've seen is that those roads will, we've, we've have a proposal to the contractor to get those roads up to final elevation paved, open for the public this year, and when I say this year, a couple of weeks is the schedule that we're looking for, we, there was some additional mill and overlay that we are trying to coordinate whether to do that this year or actually push that into next year, so the intent is that that road is open for snow removal and one from there, so. Got a lot of roads still yet to go, so, um.
Lot of asphalt to get down.
Yes. It was really nervous and stressful last Tuesday when the highs were in the teens and, uh, the concern of how are we going to get this stuff done, but sometimes mother nature still kind of controls what we do around here in South Dakota, so.
All right, any other questions, comments?
We do have progress meetings once a, a week on these, trying to keep on, so if you have any questions or concerns, you're welcome to reach out to myself or Brian and go from there.
Well, we appreciate you coming and giving us an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep our fingers crossed for better weather here, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for our scheduled agenda items, we'll move on to number twelve, it's executive session in accordance to South Dakota codified law, one dash two-five dash two, numbers one and six for personnel and security. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. We don't have any other action items afterwards, so we will come out of executive session and adjourn.